Everybody, let's call tonight's meeting to order and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the public hearing, I'd like to request that we amend the agenda under appointments and resignations to add five additional appointments and one additional resignation. Would there be a motion to do that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, we'll add that to the agenda. So we'll begin tonight with a public hearing on the proposed Economic Development Commission ordinance. Brief recap, how we got here. In the spring, this board formed a work group to draft an ordinance that establishes a framework for a new Economic Development Commission that's called for in our town charter. The work group was myself and Cheryl from the board, staff support from Maria Capriola and Melissa Appleby, town manager and deputy town manager. Interim planning director Mike Glidden and Sarah Nielsen from Main Street attended most of our meetings and provided comments along the way. We also received feedback from members of the Economic Development Commission, the former Economic Development Commission, members of the chamber, business owners, other town boards and commissions, just a long way of saying that we did our best to establish an open and inclusive process that brought us up to this point. I'll ask folks who want to speak on this to limit their comments to five minutes, but after everyone goes, if anyone needs additional time, you can feel free to come back up to the mic after that. Who would like to speak first? Joan? And I'll ask anyone who goes up there just to write your name down so we're able to capture that for the minutes.
Joan Cole, 26 Whitcomb Drive. The 2016 final report of the Charter Revision Commission reflects the intentions of three past first electmen and other commissioners to eliminate the Economic Development Commission from the past and institute an Economic Development Commission with a more productive approach. These are the quotes on the final report for the elimination of the Economic Development Commission, and I quote, this is from the final report. "The commission believes that the town needs to implement a more effective economic development approach to get new business and development projects implemented to grow the grand list. The key to economic development is the attractiveness of a community for both business and residency. In this regard, the economic growth should be championed by all of the town leadership. This task does not require any specific economic background, but rather individuals with cordial openness and the ability to direct the prospective business to the proper town agencies to rapidly respond to opportunities. The commission agreed to add the responsibility of economic development to the job responsibilities of the town manager. As such, the commission envisions the town manager having the responsibility to coordinate the various town resources to both promote economic development and respond to new opportunities. Having an intimate knowledge of the various resources and activities of the various commissions involved with economic development makes the town manager the ideal individual to coordinate the various resources in a cohesive and efficient manner. It also anticipated that the town manager would have the long-term capability to see projects through the implementation. The commission also discussed that the first-electment select woman would have a role to play in setting policy and advocating for economic development. The commission envisions a process similar to what is heard, what had heard from West Hartford, that the town manager works behind the scenes with developers to get and keep things moving along, and that the mayor is the interface with the public and town advocate for change. If required, the Board of Selectmen, in conjunction with the town manager, should be able to quickly appoint any necessary group with the proper background specific to the business in question." The charge from the Charter Revision is inconsistent with the ordinance as presented. It appears that the Charter Revision Commission did not want to implement a long-term standing commission meeting on a monthly basis, but an ad hoc group as needed. The ordinance should be reviewed to reflect the concern of the members of the Charter Revision Commission, with the town manager having a prime role. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole, news feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening, and you know my name.
Thank you, Joan. Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this hearing regarding economic development. And, not yet, lady, I'm gonna sign my name. Okay, now. Here we go again, economic development. Our Charter Revision Commission thought it was so important that they did away with it. And my recommendation is that we don't need an Economic Development Commission. One of the reasons I feel we don't need one is from the performance of the last Economic Development Commission. The various chairmen, i.e. Mr. George, i.e. Mr. Demming. There was one incident where Mr. Demming had a meeting, and I think it was attended by my friend here, where he, at the end of the meeting, he said, "Who wants to go to the Bushnell with me?" And nobody said anything, and he said, "Well, the tickets are gonna be paid for by the town." It's a dog and pony show for Mr. Estes, who at that time was the commissioner of environmental protection for the state of Connecticut. And it was being held at the Bushnell. And $100 of my tax money was given Mr. Demming so he could attend this dog and pony show, which was strictly political because of his political position and because of Mr. Estes' political position entirely. That's one reason. The next reason we come with the restaurant down here that's parked next to the Chinese and next to the apartment building that burnt down is he applied for a liquor license, and he applied for zoning, and who happens to be his attorney but Mr. George? Anybody that doesn't know anything about zoning knows that the parking situation there, and at the time, you couldn't back out into the highway, which is Hot Meadow Street, that happens to be a state highway. And if you were parked straight in and you wanted to come out, you had to go straight out onto the highway. And that was wrong. And lo and behold, what happened, like happens all the time, politics were brought into it, and he was granted a permit. And now we have a situation where the recommendation was that we don't need it. If you have a committee that's pressing at times, we went out and we tried to institute, or we're trying to institute, what we call the merit system. A political appointee who handles everything for the town, being our town manager. And I think that anything that would come up, she could handle. And any recommendation she had, she can bring forward to this board. And this board can appoint a committee, and the committee can approve the situation, rather than run through the politics of the appointments. What's gonna happen by the appointments? The Democratic Town Committee's gonna make half. The Republican Town Committee's gonna make the other half. And the thing you're gonna review tonight, the unaffiliated voters, which is a joke, because they all come out, they're all appointed by either the Democratic Town Committee or the Republican Town Committee. So who appoints your unaffiliate? The parties. So they're beholden to the party to get the nomination. I know how it works. So, the thing is, and let's look at the development. Look at the development that we developed.
Mr. Kalishman, you have about 30 seconds.
Okay, I happened to attend a meeting at the zoning board for a liquor license. And sure enough, that's the only thing we have in town. Pizza parlors and liquor licenses. And you don't need a committee of four people for that.
Thank you.
And I extend my time.
Who else would like to speak on the economic, the proposed ordinance? Yes, sir.
I'd like to speak, there's not any audience.
We have public comment after this.
Oh, you're gonna?
Yeah, so on any topic. Right now, we're just focusing on the ordinance, so, all right. Any other comment on the ordinance before we close it? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing is closed, and now we move to public audience. Come on up, sir.
Get your steps on.
Dwayne Reilly, some at 26 Oliver Steel Road. Middle of June, I was in here and asking the selectmen and also into the Board of Education for some lines for pickleball on one of the tennis courts here. And less than two months later, we've got pickleball lines on five courts at the Henry James. And tomorrow morning, if it's not raining, we'll be playing up there for the rest of time. And we appreciate it. Last Thursday, we'd gone up to eight, there was 18 players who had showed up for that. I got a little sketch here made up with some signatures. I don't know if it's 18 on here, but many signatures. And it says, "Thank you for the lines, pickleball for all, and the Simsbury listens."
Oh, thank you.
Well, I really appreciate that.
That's great.
Thank you. We can do more about the lines than we can about the rain. Anybody else? Yes.
It's been ready for three weeks. Thank you guys for having me. My name's Tim Plummer. I'm here on behalf of my organization, Connecticut Nighthawks. We're a hockey team right here in Simsbury. We play over ISCC right up the road. What we do is we bring in players from all over the country, in some cases, other countries as well, to try and develop them and achieve their goal of to one day play college hockey. These kids are from ages 15 to 20. What we're hoping to accomplish from the town is to get some people who are willing to open their doors to the kids. When they come out here, we need places for them to live. We need the families that, it'd be for the length of the season, it's around six months, September to March traditionally. Sometimes it runs past that, but mostly that's the time. The kids that we recruit are recruited off not just their skill, but their character as well. So all these kids are good kids, and they're just looking to come out here and play some hockey on the East Coast. The compensation for being a build family is $500 a month. The build families are required to provide living spaces for the kids, bed, three meals a day, all the other stuff, transportation, all that's on us to figure out. We'd like to have these guys give back to the community as well. We'd like to have everybody be a part of the opportunity for these young men. And so I'll leave some business cards here. Has all my contact information. If anybody needs to get in touch with me, have any questions about it, anybody's interested, feel free to reach out to me personally. All right?
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Where do you want me to leave the business cards?
Maybe right on the table? That'd be great, and we'll grab them afterwards. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming down. Anybody else like to speak in public audience? Joan?
Joan Cole, 26 Whitcomb Drive. On Tuesday, August 14th, 2018, there's a primary for Democrats to choose a representative in Congress to replace Elizabeth Estes in the 5th District. As a resident of Simsbury, where Mary Glassman was first-electman, I cannot vote for her candidacy. Mary Glassman entered the race for first-electman in 1991 as a token candidate, taking the place of the Democratic candidate that was being investigated by the Simsbury Police Department for child pornography. Soon after Mary Glassman won the election as first-electman, she was chairman of the Simsbury Housing Partnership that was overseeing the management of Eno Farms Affordable Housing Project in Simsbury, and rarely attended the meetings. This property was conveyed to the town by the Amos Eno Trust, quote, "to be used for the occupation, maintenance, and support of the poor," end quote. The charities division of the Attorney General's Office, under the direction of Richard Blumenthal, and overseen by first-electman Mary Glassman, approved a ground lease that violated the deed restrictions, prohibiting the town from contracting out the poor to others. First-electman Mary Glassman ignored all attempts to help the poor. Mary Glassman had a reputation of hiring only Democrats in positions in town and would protect people who donate to the Democratic Party. Mary Glassman is vindictive. Mary Glassman is the rainmaker for Pullman and Comely, where her husband Andrew Glassman is an attorney in the law firm. Mary Glassman did not run for reelection in 1999 as a result of a land development application that she thought would be approved and was denied by the Land Use Commission. Mary Glassman found a job at the state legislature. Mary Glassman returned to Simsbury and was first-electman in 2007 to 214. During that time, she ran for lieutenant governor twice and lost while spending hardly any time as first-electman. On December 1st, 2014, Mary Glassman resigned his midterm salary cut after the Board of Selectmen cut her pay to $75,000 as a result of consultants report that stated Mary Glassman only spent 5% of her time as first-electman. Mary Glassman immediately was given a job at Crec for $135,000, money that could be used for public education is given to private charter schools under Crec. Mary Glassman states that she invested in the Simsbury schools when the Board of Education is responsible for the school budget, not the first-electman in the Board of Selectmen. Mary Glassman appears to be in public service to enhance herself as a public servant, helping to improve the quality of life of others. I will not vote for Mary Glassman in the primary on August 14th, 2018. As a frequent user of State Road 167, Bushy Hill Road, I was concerned that the paving job was initiated during the day instead of at night, alleviating the nightmare of traffic patterns and delays. After many calls to the Department of Transportation, I spoke with a person who was instrumental in the decision to have the work done during the day. I contacted a person with the DOT in charge of the paving project. I was told that the town was instrumental in deciding whether the paving should be done during the day or evening hours. I questioned Tom Roy, Public Works Director, and I asked if he was instrumental in making the decision to have the work done in the daytime. At first, he denied that he was involved with the decision for the daytime activity. However, after I again questioned the DOT, the person told me that Tom Roy was at the meeting at the Highway Garage in Avon on June 12th, 2018, when the decision was made. When confronted again, he admitted to attending the meeting. I was told that the decision was made for daytime activity so that the residents in the area would not be inconvenienced with the noise during the night. However, when more people were inconvenienced with delays, dangerous traffic patterns, while placing the police officers, directing traffic in a precarious situation, nighttime paving would be less stressful for all. It appears to me the decision for daytime paving was not in the best interest of all involved. In my opinion, the entire paving job would inconvenience the public less during night, and continual nightmare on Bushy Hill Road would be alleviated. Many towns have free concerts and other events on town property, underwritten by local business. This poster lists all the businesses that donate to Simsbury Performing Arts Events that could be used to sponsor free town events. The town should review the Simsbury Patch contract with the town and give the town more authority over events, revenues, and structure. Many towns do not charge any fees for events. Simsbury should follow their lead. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole, news feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. Who else would like to speak? Yes, Mr. Kalishman.
Robert Kalishman, soon to hear. The reason I appear in public audience this evening is, number one, it's self-serving in the sense that I'm a candidate for state representative of the 16th District, and I strongly feel I can do a much better job than presently is being done. And I noticed an article in Sunday's paper by Mr. Levitin about Connecticut and people criticizing Connecticut. Obviously, he's a Democrat, and he's perfectly happy of the dire situation that we have, especially in Simsbury. What do we have in Simsbury? We pay more taxes. You own an automobile, your automobile has been increased to 37 mils. That's outrageous, to pay 37 mils on an automobile. And who gives it to us? The same people that gave us the dope, the marijuana. Mr. Palmeroy, who sits now as the chairman of the Finance Committee. He initiated the increase. And the other day, he had a meeting and the overage that they're putting into the reserve account, and that tells me, when you have an overage in collecting taxes, you're collecting too much taxes. And he wants to put it into the overage, into the reserve account. And somebody said, "Well, why don't we use it to pay for another thing?" So what are we gonna have, Mr. All Over Again? Your overage, and then more taxes, overage, more taxes? It's outrageous, 37 mils. And that's what I appeared for. How can you, you have to criticize. It is corrupting it, when you look at the situation that's going on. What else can you call it than corrupting it? Deal after deal after deal, and who's the mark? And that's the taxpayer. I can assure you of one thing. I'm elected, you won't have a tax increase. I'm elected, you'll have fairness at the community television. You won't have this, "Oh, because you're an unaffiliate, you're not part of the group," and be thrown out, like in the last election. I wasn't allowed to compete on the board. My adversaries were. Mr. Payne was allowed to expunge his theories. I wasn't allowed to say a word. And even the cable television in this town is starting to be infested with corruption, in my opinion. Look at it. People that advised for selectman are now advising the operation of our community television. And the other thing I'd like to address is, why do we have a dual system? And you can change it right now. If you have a property, and you let your front lawn grow, and you don't mow it and manicure it, you're served a notice, and they can fine you. Why, what's going on with Mr. Greenberg? What's going on with Mr. Silverstein? That property down there, the Hareford Group, go down and look at it. Some parts of it, it's waist-high. Weed's up everywhere. But take the little guy, he has to adhere, or he's gonna get a summons delivered by a policeman. What happens to Silverstein? What happens to Greenberg? The fellow that's now gonna give us a massive marijuana factory right on the main drag of Simsbury's road, Hot Meadow Street. We're gonna have a big marijuana factory down there. They're moving the operation. And who's gonna be affected of it? And I sit here, and one woman here sits on the community care. She takes care of the community children, and she hears it itching every day. She didn't appear at that hearing and say, "Wait a minute, guys. We got kids dying from overdoses of phenol and marijuana? And what do we do?" We totally ignore it. And that's another thing. You have a policeman, gives his life, he goes out, and every time he revives one of these overdoses, and he gives mouth-to-mouth recitation, he's gonna give himself an overdose if he's not careful. It happened in West Haven already.
That's five minutes, Mr. Kalishman.
Okay. And what are we doing about that? We had a situation where one policeman was hit by a car, and he had to stand on his head to get his pension. And we have the same thing. They're gonna kill themselves saving lives? And what are you gonna do? You're gonna fight over his pension?
Who else would like to speak in public audience tonight? Okay. Moving on to the first-electman's report. I say this every summer at about this time, but I can't believe that it's already mid-August. I've been blown away, in particular by the response that the Simsbury Art Trail has gotten. The Art Trail, in fact, has been so successful that it's been extended for another six weeks. The last day to see the sculptures will be on October 27th at the Chili Challenge at Simsbury Meadows. I wanted to express my gratitude to the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, which organized the Art Trail, and the businesses and the donors who made the statues possible. It was a meaningful draw to tourists, to our beautiful town, as well as a joy for all of us who live here. Since 2010, Simsbury has been named a Silver Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicycleists. I'm excited to share that the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, in partnership with the town, has submitted an application to renew that designation, and we're hopeful that we may be in the running for Gold Status. This application is no easy process. It's months of work, and it's a collaborative effort between the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee and several town departments, including Public Works, Police, and Engineering. I'm truly grateful for this partnership and the hours of volunteer work that went into this process. And just to show you, this is the application. This is not, you know, this is not five pages. There's a lot of work, and in my opinion, this, it's more about the journey than the destination. So whether, again, whether we're silver, or if we are fortunate enough to be gold, there have been improvements made to the safety for cyclists and pedestrians alike, and that all contributes to making our community healthier and economic development. And I really appreciate all the work that went into this. Eno Hall, as you may have noticed, has been under construction this summer. We're planning an open house on October 2nd, 9:30 to 11:00, giving everybody the opportunity to see the updates. Include the kitchen, bathrooms, and improved soundproofing in the main auditorium. Also, our new social worker, we expect, will be onboard and available to meet, which was a position that was created earlier this year by the Board of Selectmen. Business development. I'd like to welcome a number of new businesses to Simsbury, including two in the Simsbury Town Shops. Andy's Italian Kitchen, opened in the space formerly occupied by Little City Pizza, and True Maid, Men's Consignment Store. Revive Boutique Consignment, opened at 1384 Hot Meadow Street in the Holloways Plaza. My Lily of the Valley, a children's boutique, opened in Simsmore Square. And Quarry Dog Daycare, opened at 53 Quarry Road. A couple of updates from the Planning Department. 690 Hot Meadow Street, which is the Ensign Mansion. Building permits have been filed for the conversion of the existing mansion and annex into a restaurant on the first floor, a little over 7,000 square feet, as well as office space, which will be about 1,400 square feet. The second and third floors of the mansion are expected to be turned into five residential apartment units. Also, an update on 995 Hot Meadow Street, which is the mobile gas station. Planning staff has met with potential tenants that intend to reopen the gas station and the convenience store. Also, an update that I think is pretty neat, coming from the Planning Department. Staff is working with the Zoning Commission on a comprehensive update of the zoning regulations. The intent of the work is to create more user-friendly version of the zoning regulations. The Zoning Commission has a special meeting scheduled for August 20th to continue discussing the matter, and there'll be public hearings later on. That'll be scheduled at a future date. Picnic in the Park. So the Aging and Disability Commission and the Simsbury Special Education Parent Teacher Organization invite all residents of Simsbury who have a disability or a family member with a disability to join us for a picnic and a day of fun. Food will be provided by Kane's Market. Food will be provided by Kane's Market, taking place August 25th at St. Catherine of Siena Church from 11:30 to 1:30. Also, some save the dates. September Fest runs Friday, September 7th this year through Sunday, the 9th. Don't miss out on Friday fireworks. The next concert on the Green will be September 15th at the Simsbury Historical Society. Music will be from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. and feature a band called Leave You Pop &amp; Friends, co-sponsored by the Historical Society and the Simsbury Grange. Finally, the Simsbury Grange Agricultural Fair takes place on September 15th, 10 a.m. to 3:00 in the afternoon. And that brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you.
That's what happens when you have a month between meetings.
Right. It's very lengthy. Well, good evening. Under Board of Selectmen Business, I do want to remind folks to save the date. We were finally able to find a Saturday that worked for all board members to have our goal-setting sessions. That will be Saturday, September 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We are working on a meeting location for that space, but very much looking forward to the board being able to engage in some goal-setting. The Economic Development Workshop, again, a reminder to save the date. This is going to be sponsored by the Connecticut Economic Resource Center, and that workshop will be held on September 13th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. So far, we've had a strong number of RSVPs coming in for the event, which is terrific. I'm encouraged by that. If you would like to attend, we're just asking that you RSVP to the Town Manager's Office inter. And as we had previously mentioned, we had a number of groups that were invited to participate in that session, and we've identified those groups for you here. And we had a number of additions to the agenda, so thank you for adding those items. Late last week, we did receive a request to have multiple appointments added to the agenda, as well as one resignation. So we were able, late last week and today, to finish preparing those memos and correspondence to you, which we emailed to you today and provided by hard copy this evening. We do have one revised attachment for an agenda item. This is the agenda item regarding the Juvenile Review Board Procedures. We needed to make a correction by mistake. The Board of Selectmen's law, actually, was left off of the document.
Thanks, guys.
I'm surprised we didn't get the call from Mike. Hey, Mike is currently serving, and we're very grateful to him for his... for serving on that group. So again, we apologize for that error. We're very glad that we caught that and made that correction for your consideration this evening. Under Departmental News and Notes, for Culture, Parks, and Recreation, just a reminder that the Simsbury Farms pools will be closing for the season on August 28th. We are going into a slightly modified schedule, which is Monday through Friday, 1 to 7, and Saturdays and Sundays, noon to 6, for the remainder of the season. Also, under Culture, Parks, and Recreation, Simsbury Celebrates 2018. The planning for that event has begun. It will be held on Saturday, November 24th. If we have members of the public or a group that would like to help and volunteer or be a sponsor for that event, we have contact information for the Culture, Parks, and Recreation Department, and would ask folks to contact that number. From the Library. After 53 years of service, our reference in adult service librarian, Celia Roberts, will be retiring on September 30th. I mean, that is just an amazing amount of service to this community. She's made innumerable contributions, and we want to recognize her as she prepares for her retirement. So there will be an open house being held at the library on Friday, September 28th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. All are welcome to attend, and we encourage you to stop by and wish her well. From Police. We recently had several members of our Simsbury Police Department that were involved in a life-saving call for service. Those members were dispatcher Anderson, Officer Bonacanti, and Officer Bertell. And they responded by providing quick, life-saving measures that saved the life of one of our residents. Recently, actually today, the family was able to come in and meet with the officers and the dispatcher that aided in that call. And I just wanted to take a moment and commend our staff members for their life-saving work. From the Town Manager's Office, we are making progress on our recruitment for the Planning and Community Development Director position, and the first-round interviews are being held this Thursday, August 16th. Selectman Mike Payne has agreed to assist with those interviews. As well, we will have a member of the Planning Commission, a member of the Zoning Commission, and a member of the ZBA, along with our Town Engineer, participating in the first round of interviews. We've also assembled a panel of external professionals as well, and we look forward to conducting those interviews this week. And lastly, EverSource will be performing transmission maintenance work off of Ruthie's Lane, Westledge Road, Fleetwood Drive, Laurel Lane, and Castor Bridge Crossing. That began in July and is expected to be completed by the end of the year. Additional information regarding that is included in my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Maria.
We have one presentation tonight. In the spring, this board established a work group to improve the process for appointing members of the public to various boards and commissions that we have in town. Also, as part of the scope of this work, we're looking at the appointment process, in particular for unaffiliated voters, which make up nearly 40% of registered voters, but are only lightly represented on boards and commissions. And that's a piece of this work that we haven't gotten to yet. So the update we have tonight is on the overall appointment process, not specific to unaffiliated voters. The work group consists of myself and Mike Payne from the board, with staff support from Town Clerk Erica Butler, graduate student Tom Fitzgerald, and our Town Manager Maria Capriola. I'm very excited about what we're going to share tonight with you, because I believe that it's going to bring more transparency to the appointment process, while also saving the town money and saving folks and Erica's office time. The presentation for board members is most likely... most likely... is mostly to inform you of the work we've done, but please feel free to interrupt with questions or clarifications or suggestions. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, that was a good introduction, so we could probably skip the first two. The purpose, Erica stated that. So it was initially started just to take a look at the process in general and how it includes unaffiliated voters. But as we found with most everything, once you get involved, you start to uncover other things. So it was really taking a look at the whole process as a whole, not just specific to unaffiliated voters. Okay, so first I'll go over the current appointment process. It's pretty straightforward. There's... It's more of a lack of a process, I guess you could say, at this point. Basically, when expired terms are about to come up, the list of expired terms gets sent to the town committees. And I prepare that list based off of a database that we have. And then if a vacancy arises, the vacancy... the resignation is filed with my office, and the notice of the vacancies gets sent out again to the town committees. So just right there, that's pretty much what happens. And then the town committees will come with recommendations, and they're sent to the Board of Selectmen, and at that point, either approved or not approved. So that's pretty much all that happens with that. Just to take a look and to show everyone what happens after the appointment is made, I receive notification from Melissa after the meetings of any new appointments. I update the database. Appointment letters are prepared and mailed using postage and envelopes, and along with conflict of interest forms and an FOI informational sheet. The members then submit the conflict of interest forms to the town clerk, and they get sworn in before attending their first meeting. If a member chooses to resign, they must submit a signed original to the town clerk. The town clerk then submits notice of resignation to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen acknowledge the resignation at the following meeting. I then send out a letter acknowledging... a resignation acknowledgement letter to the former member, thanking them for their service. So it becomes a very long, drawn-out process, and we'll talk about that further after. And then I wanted to just talk a little bit about how this current process can affect unaffiliated voters. Unfortunately, they're not being noticed when terms are expiring. That list is going directly to town committees. And when the terms expire, they're open to anyone at that point. Whether there is going to be a reappointment, but it can be a totally new appointment at that time. Vacancies are different in the sense that they have to be filled by someone of the same party if the term has not yet expired. So in that sense, in that case, it would have to be someone from the same party. They can submit a volunteer submission form, but these, again, are also sent to the town committees. We have a process in place in the database. You can go online and you can fill out basically just an interest form, and then I get notification of those, and then I send them out to the Board of Selectmen, Maria, any interested, possibly department heads that staff these committees, and then the town committees. We took a look at what other similar surrounding towns were doing. Town of Windsor had a really great example for us. They have an explanation on their website of the appointment process. So before you go into the database with all the town committees listed, they say... they basically lay it out here. This is how this happens. This is how you can get onto a boarding commission. We were lacking that right now. You just enter into the database, which is great. There's a lot of information there, but there's really no explanation of how you could possibly get onto a board or commission. Town of Windsor also has consistent webpage profiles for boards and commissions. There's basically a template set up on each boarding commission page, and each commission follows the same type of information. So it's easy to look at just from a user standpoint. And then it kind of just regulates what is being put on to these profile pages. And then all recommendations must be submitted with an application. This includes new appointments and reappointments. So even for recommendations from the town committees, they must include some type of backup for their recommendations, whether it be, you know, they do have a volunteer form like we do. So whether it be that... But again, that's not just for unaffiliated voters. That's for all recommendations. In this case, which I don't... I put this in here just to show that they are doing it. I don't think we'll get to this point, but they actually interview all recommendations from... they use their personnel committee to do it. So even for Democratic and Republican recommendations, they still go through that whole process. Again, I don't see that happening, but we just wanted to throw it out there that that is what they're doing. They then pass along the qualified candidates to the appointing authority, which in our case would be the Board of Selectmen. The Town of Bloomfield was not as involved, but they also have a committee on committees, which sounds crazy, but it exists. And theirs was mostly for unaffiliated voters. They would still take recommendations from the town committees, but if there were interested unaffiliated voters, they would use this committee on committees to sit down with these, you know, these candidates and decide if they want to send it on for appointment. And they also had an interest form as well. So basically, what we have tonight, like Erica said, it's basically process improvements. There's really no substantial change to the process, but there are tweaks that we can make to it that will make everybody's life a lot easier for everyone that's involved. The list of expiring terms and vacancies would be posted under News and Announcements on the town's website. So anytime a vacancy pops up, there would be a news item that says, you know, this vacancy has opened. It must be filled by this particular party because that was the person's party affiliation who vacated the spot. So again, this isn't... that, in a sense, wouldn't even help unaffiliated voters, but it's reaching out to the town committees. It's going to help them as well, because they may be able to stumble across someone who's interested that they may not have known about. There will also be a cover page before entering the boarding commission database with an explanation of the appointment process. And I believe if you click on that, Melissa, it should open up. Yeah, I did earlier, but it might make me log in once just to... Oh, no, it's there. So what I've done is I've created a page. It's not published right now, but basically, it's... it tells you you can enter the database, but if you're interested, it's just an explanation of the process we currently have in place. So you can see a list of the boards and commissions, which will take you to the link on the website. It has the meeting calendar, which, as of right now, that's the only way on the website for people to see when boards and commissions meet and how often. But going forward, we're going to be putting the actual meeting schedule for the year on the profile pages, because it's a lot easier to look at than the meeting calendar. It's more straightforward. But for now, I put in the link to the meeting calendar. You'll be able to view a list of the current vacancies, which, again, already exists on our database, but because we don't really advertise it and put it out there, people probably don't know that they can really use this database for more than just a list. It's very user-friendly, and it has a lot of information on it. I think we just need to make it known that people can utilize it. And then a list of expiring terms. So by year, it'll lay out by year which terms are about to expire. So people can even plan for a year down the line if they have... if someone's going to be retiring from their full-time position, and they know they're going to have time available in a year or so, you can even look and be proactive. And then there's the volunteer submission form, which, again, already exists. And if you want to click on that, Melissa, I think that should open up because it goes through our database. Yep, and this, again, this already exists, but it's just throwing it out there and making it known that you have the opportunity to fill this out. Oh, sorry. I didn't even know. No, you did it. I was waiting for you to click. You already did. Oh, no, go to the next one. You're good. Yes, I'm confusing you. Another thing, like I said, we kind of found a few other things just with the process even after the fact. Right now, for resignations, and we had this issue today, we're only accepting a signed original in hard copy format. And with technology and how busy people are nowadays, we realize that that is outdated. I thought it was outdated two years ago when I started. And so what I've done is I've created a submission form right through the website where people can resign using this form, or they can even email if they don't want to use the form, and they can still deliver the hard copy. That's fine. We're not saying we won't accept it. But what's happening is people are quote-unquote "resigning," but I'm never finding out about it, because they're resigning amongst the board, whether they say they moved or they're not interested anymore. And then people are coming to me, wondering why that person isn't taken off the database. It's because I cannot officially take it off until I receive that hard copy resignation. So spots that are quote-unquote "vacant" are being held up, and people... new appointments to fill those vacancies can't be made until that resignation officially happens. So I've created an online form. Again, it's not live right now. So there's just a quick explanation there at the top, but it does say that by clicking Submit, you are confirming your resignation from the board or commission stated, and that you attest that you are the person stated below that is submitting this resignation notice. It asks for name, address, phone, email, type of member, whether you're alternate, temporary, regular, the name of the commission, the effective date of the resignation. And then those are required, and then we put in some optional reasons down at the... for reason for resignation, whether the person's moving out of town. We're not requiring that they tell us that. And then... But it would, you know, if they want to provide that information, that would be great. And then any additional comments. And this is a way to get some feedback, I'm sure. People may not be too quick to write that in a resignation letter, a hard copy, but as we know, when people are online, they might be a little more truthful just because they're behind a keyboard. But it actually might provide some really valuable information for us. That will be submitted to me, and then they will receive... and I also put it in there, that they will receive a confirmation from me as well. from me as well. And that, I'm just going to kind of skip forward just a minute just to say that I am going to start collecting contact information for boards and commissions. Believe it or not, we have never collected emails and phone numbers for members when they get sworn in. I also found that a little odd when I started two years ago. So what ends up happening is in the appointment letter that I sent out, it says, please provide your contact information to the appropriate department head, which we know does not always happen. And then typically I will get asked if I have contact information, and unfortunately I don't. So as a central hub now, when people get appointed, we will be asking for contact information. So getting back to the resignation letter, when I receive a resignation, I will confirm through email and/or phone with them that they were the ones that submitted that resignation. It's just another way to make sure that the person is actually that person. And then I created an electronic conflict of interest form. We checked with Bob DiCrescendo that, and I always thought this, but right now we're requiring appointed members to come in and take the oath of office before they attend their first meeting. And that holds up a lot of meetings as well because people are busy. They at times can barely make the meetings. So to get them to come in at another time to take the oath, and then they're not supposed to be taking any votes if they had not come in to take the oath. I had always thought, and I was pretty sure that it's just elected officials that have to come in and take the oath of office. And that is true. There is nothing in our charter and state statutes that say an appointed member has to take the oath of office. The conflict of interest form is currently sent in hard copy format with the appointment letter, but we have created an online form for that, which is basically a replica of the hard copy. It's, but they would be submitting it electronically and they, you can click on that. Sorry, Melissa. So it looks just as it would if they were viewing it, you know, in hard copy format. Down at the bottom, I think Melissa just says that by clicking submit, you agree to and acknowledge the above and attest that you are the person stated below. So they'll fill in their board and commission, any areas of exception, their name, and then the date, and then submit. Again, they will have the option to fill out a hard copy. We're not saying you can't. This again is just for those that are having a hard time getting in here, just to streamline the process and just speed up the process of getting someone to, to get to their first meeting, which we know is important, especially in having a hard time sometimes getting forums on some of these appointed boards. The appointment letter and resignation, it's become very cumbersome. Like I said, after I get the confirmation of appointment, I am drafting letters and I am printing and signing and using paper and postage. And it's just, again, a little bit outdated. And if we're going to be collecting emails, the email template there, I think you can open that up, Melissa. Just, again, this mimics pretty much the appointment letter I'm sending out right now, but it has the link in it that says they can submit their online form for conflict of interest, and that the Freedom of Information document is attached. And then if you choose to resign, again, it'll take you to that online form. And it does state, again, that you can submit hard copies if you'd like. And this, I believe, I mean, ultimately, they could get this email the next day after they've been appointed, and they can submit the form the next day, which means within one week's, not even one week's time, they could be attending their first meeting. We sometimes have months before someone comes in to submit their conflict of interest and their oath, and it just ties up that spot for, for quite some time. And I think this will alleviate a lot of that. And then, yes. So then as far as resignation acknowledgement letter, we find that a lot of times why people are resigning is because they've moved. So whether or not they're even getting the letter, you know, months down the line acknowledging their service to the town, this would be a direct email. And again, this would be the day after the meeting, I would send out an email letting them know that the Board of Selectmen has acknowledged their resignation and thanking them for their service. Again, it's more direct, and they'll, they'll get it because we know that's the email they provided. And of course, obviously, if an email ever bounced back, I would have no problem sending an actual letter. I wouldn't stop there. I would, you know, try to reach out and thank them. And then I've talked about the board and commission database. I don't believe it's being utilized to its full capacity. It can do a lot, and I'm still getting to know everything that it can do. It just, again, needs to be out there for people to see. And I think that cover page and making it in a, it needs to be placed in a better spot on the website. It's very, it's hidden. It's hard for people to find. They just, most people just go right on to the profile pages, but that's not the actual database. There's a database separate that feeds the membership to those profile pages, but the database can do so much more than that. So again, I just don't think people know that. And then the centralized location of our, our contact information for our members. For next steps, we'd like to start implementing these new electronic forms. They are pretty much ready to go. I have everything saved and on the website. It's just a matter of clicking publish. The big piece here is discussion regarding process for vetting these unaffiliated voters. That's the part that we have not gotten to, you know, a process for that. One thing I think, Melissa, actually, that brings me back. Go, is there a, after they submit their volunteer submission form, that bottom one, I forgot that follow-up email. And I want to bring this up because after they submit a volunteer submission form right now, they, it basically says, thank you for submitting your form, and that's it. When I get confirmation of one, I have drafted this email that will go out to everybody just so they feel like their submission form isn't just being lost in space somewhere. These are people that are willing to volunteer their time, and I think they deserve a response. So we've just drafted this email just saying that, you know, expect to hear from the two town committees within the next couple of weeks that their volunteer forms have been, you know, forwarded on to them, and I will collect the right emails to include in here so that they can directly contact them. And that, right now, we wanted to make sure that they knew that there was a work group working on a process for vetting these unaffiliated voters, just to show that we are working on it. And if they have any questions, that they can reach out to Erica or Mike, just so they don't feel that their email is being sent and ending there, and they have someone to follow up with. Just in this email alone, they'd have my email, the two town committees, and then Erica and Mike. That's five people they feel like they can reach out to that. Right now, they don't. They don't know where their submission forms are going. And then I think the other thing we were going to start working on is attempt, we want to create a structured template, consistent template for the profile pages. So we want to start drafting what type of information we want to be consistently on each profile page, just, just to make it look more uniform and easier for the public to view.
Right.
Any questions?
Thank you. What questions do you have for Erica?
A couple of questions, just tactical. By the way, I think, I do think this is very good. The transparency as well as better organization, I think, makes a lot of sense. So let me just understand. So you have a nomination that's coming in from a nominating chairman of one of the parties.
Correct.
And so part of what we're asking is, we now want a better discipline of having a resume as well as having the individual complete the volunteer form, right? Is that?
Well, it would be, we would accept either. I mean, if they, if it's easier for the town committees to just say, here, fill out this online form and we'll use that to attach, it's a tool for them to use and it's consistency. But if, if the person already has a short resume or even an outline of why they think they're qualified, that would be accepted as well. We just, we want something as a form of backup just for, for you guys to utilize before you, you approve a recommendation.
And Erica, do the nominating chairs have, here's what I'm thinking. Do they have access to be able to pull the candidate profile? So when they send their email in and they want to have documentation and what they want to include is the volunteer submission form?
Okay.
Do they have access to pull that, or is this process dependent upon you then attaching that to their, their submission?
Well, what we did do is we did create a Word document that replicates the volunteer form. So if they wanted to, they could have the Word template saved in their computer and just use that. They don't have to direct them to the link. If they were to direct them to the link, then yes, I would get the volunteer form. But in that case, just like I've been doing, I would forward it on to them. So they would have it for their records. But they can absolutely save the Word template or a fillable PDF. We haven't quite figured that out yet, but that can be saved on their computer and they can just use it going forward. It would provide the same exact information.
Okay. And my second question, the conflict of interest form online, that gets dated when it gets completed?
Yes. Yeah. So what would happen is, well, we ask them to put the date in, but then the date, when they click submit, it's going to go directly to my email. So that would be the date that I've received it.
Okay. And you don't envision any risk to not having a sign signature anymore with those, Erica?
No, we've, I mean, we've talked to Bob about it. As far as, the only thing I, you know, and this was going back more to the resignation, is when you, you want to make sure it's actually that person. The good thing is when they fill out the volunteer submission form, we're requiring that they provide their email and their phone number. So with every conflict of interest form that I receive and every resignation I receive, I have a way of following up with them without responding to that email, creating a separate email that says, you know, I want to let you know that I've received this, making sure that it was, you know, actually you that had submitted it. So it's just another way of confirming it.
Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks. I think this is a great start. Can you tell me how much of the information that's provided to you, you anticipate being available to the public online? Is somebody going to be able to click on a commissioner's name and they're going to see their application?
No.
Are they going to see their conflicting?
No. So for the contact, yeah, no. For the contact information, when they submit it on their volunteer submission form, which some people already are, that part isn't live to, so I have to log into the database to get certain information. What's live on the site is just their name and their term. It's not, their, their address doesn't even show up and their phone number or email, none of that. That wouldn't change because right now I am collecting that information from some people because they choose to put it in. The difference is now that we're requiring that they submit it just so we have a central hub, but that would just be, you know, for me to view. Granted, if someone came in and said, you know, I'm looking for a member of, you know, the Housing Authority and I, you know, I want to know if you have an email on file for them, I would look it up and give it to them because at that point it is public record because I'm collecting it. But just to give you an example, in Sullington, we, we listed right on the website, we collected emails and phones, and it was, it was listed right there for people to contact, contact them. So this wouldn't be as open as that. They'd have to come to me requesting the contact information. So if someone had a concern, it's another way for them to reach out to a member on the board or commission. Right now, they have to contact, I believe, the department head to get to the person.
On some boards and commissions, the chairperson of that board keeps the contact information.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if we should contact through the chair or we should have everybody's information available like that? I don't know. I'm just
No, no, that's fine.
Thinking of a scenario here.
And that's probably some of the thought process and why we didn't collect it to begin with. I think it's, we're just trying to create a way that it's centrally located just because
Right.
there's times when people come to me asking for even department heads that haven't heard, they know someone got appointed, but they have no way of contacting them.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
I can see that. Okay.
Erica, are you, do, are we talking tonight about the vetting process or is that a future discussion?
The vetting process is a future discussion.
Okay.
Anticipating that.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we'll probably start talking about that some more at our, our next meeting, which I believe is in September. And then as we come up with some ideas, we'll then again present to you some ideas.
Everything that Erica's presented tonight is really taking advantage of the technology we already have.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Unfortunately, it, with the amount of boards and commissions that we have, the, the time that we spend just alone in the town clerk's office on it has become, has become a lot. It's, it's at times like figuring out a puzzle. And it's, especially stepping into it being new, it was quite the task. And I'm just now, after two years in, really starting to get a hold on it. And these small changes, because they are, they're small changes really. They're, we're not drastically changing anything. A, it'll benefit my office. It'll benefit the actual boards and commissions. It'll benefit the, the staff that is staffing these committees. I think it's just a way to, to get people on the commissions quicker. The people are willing to volunteer their time, and we know that everybody has limited time. So any way we could eliminate them having to spend more time trying to get in here, I think is, is great for everyone.
Agreed. Any other questions for Erica? Yeah, Maria.
I would like to commend Erica and Tom for their efforts on this project. They have just been so responsive and worked really hard on this, and I'm really proud of the work that they did for us. So thank you both. What would be helpful for us at a staff level would be, we received consensus from the work group that they were comfortable with what I would call these process improvements. But for us, the next step, if the full board is comfortable with the process improvements, we would like to move forward with implementing the electronic forms. So I think just hearing sort of consensus from the group as a whole that you are or aren't comfortable with the electronic forms. And if you are, we will, you know, proceed to implement the new electronic forms.
Are we comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I'll echo what Maria said. Appreciate all of the work. And thanks, Mike, for joining me on this journey.
Yeah, it's been a great, it's been a great experience for me. It's actually the first committee that I've been a part of since I've worked in the town clerk field. So it's, it's been a learning process for myself. And Maria is, and Erica have both been extremely helpful and patient. We've been extremely busy in our office the last couple of weeks with the primary coming up. So, you know, I've done my best to get to this point, but I look forward to keep going.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to selectman actions. Item A is tax refund. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $79,651.52 and to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Item B is proposed revisions to the statement of procedure for the juvenile review board. So it's been more than 35 years since the statement of purpose and procedures has last been updated. The JRB helps to divert young people from the criminal justice system, typically by offering community service opportunities. Kristin, yeah, please go up to the podium. Kristin Simsberry is Director of Community and Social Services, and I was hoping you could just maybe speak really briefly about what the JRB does because I think it's a neat thing for our community to know about, and then the changes that are being recommended.
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me up. The need to make some updates came to light when we had a member who had stepped down or resigned from the juvenile review board. And when I brought it to Maria's attention, we noticed that had been quite some time since the policies and procedures have been looked at. And we also wanted to update them from their typewritten format. So we decided to look at making some changes. The juvenile review board is a board comprised of town staff members and community members as well as one of our Board of Selectmen members. And the purpose of the juvenile review board is to help divert youth that are troubled or experiencing being on the wrong side of the law, to divert them from the juvenile justice system and to help get them back on the right track. And any individual, any child under the age of 18 that's committed a crime for the first time, as long as it's not a felony, is eligible to come before the juvenile review board. And that gives them the opportunity to not have to go to court and possibly avoid having a potential record, a police record. And when someone comes to us before the board, they appear with their parents typically, or legal guardian, and they have to accept responsibility for their crime. And then they are assigned, for lack of better terms of punishment, by the board. And that punishment, that debt to society is also interwoven within the town of Simsberry where we give them opportunities to make restitution that benefits the town. Primarily, the youth that come before us will Primarily, the youth that come before us will do volunteer service in the school system with the custodians. Some of the changes that we've recently made to the purpose and statement is, one of the main changes was originally, the threshold for the age was 15, and that has since been raised to the age of 17. So anyone age 17 or under has the opportunity to come before the board. We also made some updates to the board composition. That was one of our main changes. Originally, we've always had a member of the Police Department, and currently that member is Detective May. And we originally had three seats assigned to the school board, and that's been a lot for them to staff. So we have made the change to the two seats, which has been traditionally comfortable for the school board. We also had two seats under the Town Recreation Department, and we've amended that to be one seat, which would be assigned by the director. And then the Director of Community and Social Services would also be a standing member, as well as your chair for the Juvenile Review Board. One of our new additions is adding a representative from the YMCA. I had the opportunity to meet with the Executive Director and have a conversation with him about how that would be a nice addition to our board, as the Farmington Valley Y overlaps with all of our communities, and it would give an opportunity to the juveniles to have the positive experience of the YMCA, and also open up the potential of another avenue for us to refer for the community service hours. We have had and always have had a probation officer, that has not changed, as well as a community counseling service, a clergy member, which rotates amongst the different faith-based organizations in our community. And we added an alternate. So the alternate would be our future town social worker, whom, as an aside, we're interviewing tomorrow. We're very excited about that. And that alternate would possibly be a substitute for myself if I were ever not able to attend for some reason. There was some language that we updated based on some of the other boards and commissions, some standard language that we've added in here. And if I may, there was one, one word that's missing from this paper, and if I may ask you to add it in. It says in letter H that a quorum is needed, and that should read that the quorum is not needed to take action on matters. And the reason for that being is because they're all time-sensitive. We have only a certain amount of time to hear a case before it would have to be sent back to court. So we will go if we have even a low number on the board. So I apologize for that small word being omitted.
And Kristin, is that no different than it is today in terms of the lack of quorum?
Exactly. That's the way that we've always functioned. I just felt that now would be the opportunity to add that to the official language. And then the, the rest is pretty much just some cleanup of the language. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Maria?
No, I think you did a great job covering that. And again, just want to thank Kristin and her team for their work on updating this, as well as the Juvenile Review Board. They also participated in reviewing this, and I think that staff did a good job of gathering models from their professional, excuse me, model, policies and procedures from the Professional Association, and looking at some, some benchmark towns, and did a really great job of updating this for us.
Does anyone have any questions for Kristin or any feedback?
Just on your mention of the quorum thing, and I realize this is terribly picky, but if, if a quorum is not required to take action, why do you need to have a quorum?
We technically don't, but that language was in there, so I didn't know how, how much you wanted me to change that. That's a really valid.
It just seems like you're opening yourself up to a question there that could be asked, perhaps by a participant, or that if you don't need a quorum, then why bother defining what a quorum is?
That's a very true statement.
Also strike that sentence.
Just delete the sentence.
Just delete that part. I mean, you can still have the, you know, there, the first part, "Meeting shall be often as necessary, attendance shall be recorded," stop.
So are we proposing that we would cut that sen, so take the sentence out entirely, not mentioning a quorum at all?
Right.
Okay.
Well, it just seems like, you know, why, why open that up?
Yeah. Just summarized, wanted to make sure I understood.
Sure. Yes, and I think we're one of the only boards that does act in that fashion, and it's because of the time-sensitive nature. We have to hear the cases within 30 days of being presented with it, otherwise it needs to be sent back to court, and we don't want to hold up, or keep someone from seeing us because we don't have enough people, especially during summer with the schools not being available. It can be tough.
I get it.
Okay. Mike?
I will tell folks, this is a really interesting group. It's a good group. We, I think have had a positive impact on the young men and women that have come forward, and it's, it's, it's a good thing. It's a very good thing the town does.
We've also made one interesting change that I'll just share with you. In the past, typically, the, the youth would be assigned their community service hours and just be expected to, to complete those hours, and then they would be all set. But we've also added in the addition of asking the youth to write a three-page essay on what it is that they had done wrong, why it was wrong, and if it was connected to, say, vaping, we've also asked them to talk about why it is not healthy for them. So we've added in a little bit of an education component to this, to help give them some time to reflect on their actions.
Any other feedback? Okay. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018, to revise the statement of purpose and procedure for the Simsberry Juvenile Review Board, striking the sentence about quorum?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. The, next to item C is the Eno Hall use policy. So the policy was last updated eight years ago, and staff recently has noted some challenges with the current policy, among them prioritizing requests for the venue, when fee waivers should or should not be granted, the cost to nonprofits, which may be leading to more fee waiver requests. So we're proposing forming a work group to develop a revised policy, and our expectation is that this shouldn't be too much of a heavy lift, a couple of meetings. And, you know, the hope is that this is a, if a sound policy is created for Eno, it could also serve as a model for other town buildings. Anything you wanted to add, Maria?
No, I think you summed that up well. I had an opportunity to speak with Cheryl about this, potentially serving on this committee, and she very graciously agreed to serve, should you form a work group. Ideally, I think it would be helpful to have two members from the board serving on that work group, so if there was another member interested in serving, if in addition to establishing the work group, if we could name the members to the work group this evening, that would be helpful.
Sure. I'm glad to raise my hand for that, but I wanted to see if anyone else was, was interested.
You're welcome to it.
All right, Cheryl.
Okay. That's what I get.
Okay. Any other?
I've been very outspoken on the fee waiver problem, and I, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, appreciate that. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018, to establish a work group of the Board of Selectmen to review the Eno Memorial Hall facility use, policy, and fee schedule? The work group is tasked with presenting a draft revised policy and fee schedule to the full Board of Selectmen, and further move to appoint Cheryl Cook and myself, Eric Wellman, to the work group.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item D is the ice rink and proposed paddle tennis fees. So the staff recommendation that was unanimously approved by Culture Parks and Rec Commission would leave ice rink fees unchanged from last year, and increased paddle tennis fees, which have remained flat, as I understand it, for about five years. Tom, would you mind just summarizing the changes to paddle tennis and the rationale there?
Yeah, the, the only, like you said, the only, the only rate we're going to adjust, or the cost for the impetus to adjust any of the rates was the, the five-year pattern on the day-long rentals hadn't, you know, hadn't been touched in five years, while the other rates had been adjusted. During that time, staff, you know, the front desk time, the rate, the staff time has gone up, the cost of the propane to heat the, heat the courts has gone up. We've also had, you know, staff rate, staff adjustments with the guys who are plowing and shoveling the walk up to the, to the court. So there, I think there, there was a small adjustment made, it was minimal. But in light of that adjustment, in order to, we prefer that we do have long-term rentals, so we did make the adjustment to the day, the day and, the day and evening walk-up rate, just to keep encouraging, keep those prices in line, and still encourage the break, the price break for the, for the season-long, day-long rental. So that was it. That's, it's, it's a minimal rental. You break it down by the number of times and the number, and four people on the court, it's about a quarter per, per week, per, per person. So it's, it's not a whole lot, a whole lot there.
Is there any, any questions for Tom? Okay. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018, to approve the fee schedule for the Simsberry Farms ice rink and paddle tennis courts as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item E is, is the proposed use of money from the Simsberry Triathlon Special Revenue Fund to design and install eight informational signs at various points along the triathlon route. The signs would describe the history and ecology of the area. Culture Parks and Rec Commission reviewed and endorsed the project at its last meeting. The last thing I'll point out is the Special Revenue Fund, which would be the funding source for this project, gets its money from triathlon registrations, so these aren't tax dollars. Are there questions or discussion from members of the board about the project, or Maria, did you want to add anything?
Sure. So I, I do just want to note that we have provided some sample content for you, as well as design. And as proposed, the total project would include eight signs along the trail. I do want to note that it is important to us that we do leave a small fund balance, if you will, in this particular reserve account, because we will need to provide some deposits for next year's race upfront. And in the event that we continue to see declining participation and the race doesn't break even, we do need to have some funds available to make sure that we're able to cover the costs of the event. So that being said, if we find, as we're moving along in the project, that we can't fully afford to do all eight signs in the initial go, we could always, you know, pull back and slightly reduce the scope initially if we needed to.
This just came in today, just some of the graphic designs for six of the eight signs.
Can I just ask a question about that? Because it looks like from the numbers that are provided in our agenda documents, that the numbers don't add up to leaving a $4,000 fund balance, given the price options that you've listed, so.
Sure. And these are conservative estimates in the sense that they're conservative on the high end. And so, again, we would certainly make sure that once we had a good final cost of fabrication, installation, along with the design costs, that if we were getting close to that projected amount, we would obviously need to scale back and maybe not do one or two of the signs in the initial rollout, to ensure that we felt that, when we looked at the account and did the analysis, we felt that leaving about $4,000 in the account was a good amount, just again, to ensure that we have adequate funds for next year's race. Tom, or Tom, I'm not sure if you want to add anything?
And Diana also came tonight, in case you have any specific questions. I know she worked on the committee with Linda to help come up with some of the content. But as Maria said, there, there's a fund balance. We understand that we would want to leave that $4,000 to $5,000 in there. And I think as we go along, we would be doing this probably in packages of four signs or, or six signs, see, just to make sure we're exactly where we want to be. And part of this, where this, in terms of the cost estimating, is a little bit rough at this point. When we actually look at the exact location of the sign, we can start seeing if we need to bring in topsoil, if we need to bring in asphalt. We want to make sure these signs are permanent signs, that they're far enough away from the trail, that they're not going to inhibit any of the trail use. And we also want to make sure that they're ADA compliant. All of these signs are going to be done in accordance with the National Park Standard, so.
I have one other follow-up question. Is there any maintenance that's going to be required for these signs over a period of time? What kind of covering are they going to have? If there's damage, who's going to fix them?
I'd like to call not it on that one, but I don't think I get to. We're looking, and it's funny that you mentioned it, because we looked, and we've talked to a couple of different sign manufacturers about having the signs printed and then doing plexiglass over the top, and the one sign installer actually told us it's more expensive for the plexiglass than it is for the sign. So we actually talked about why wouldn't we get a two-sided sign, so you would actually, if it was damaged, flipping it over. The actual sign panel is one of the less expensive components, and I think that's part of, as we look at the trail as an entirety, there's a lot of signs up there that I think that we need to talk about at some point, having a, a review of saying, okay, this has been up, it's faded, at this point, it either needs to be updated or it should be removed.
Right. That's a, I've seen some of them, and it seems like.
And it's funny, because I could talk about it, and I know you use the trail frequently. There's many people who literally say on Iron Horse, they haven't seen the signs that describe the wetlands in there. They can very quickly blend into the background.
Right. Okay. So you're, don't anticipate any ongoing maintenance costs for the town associated with these signs?
No, no. The only, the only thing would be, like you said, if they were vandalized, in which case there would be some level of replacement cost.
If I could. I have found, working with Kerma in the past, typically when there's an incident of vandalism, that oftentimes if we file a claim, we would pay the deductible, and they would often pay the difference. So they've generally been pretty, pretty good, working, I think, with towns when we've been victims of vandalism.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Bears or anything?
You never know. Wild place we live. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018, to approve the use of funds from the Triathlon Special Fund, Fund Number 254, to be used for the design, fabrication, and installation of informational signage locations along the town's system of trails?
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item F is the proposed Economic Development Commission ordinance. So earlier this evening, we heard some public comment on the proposed EDC ordinance, and tonight, it's my hope that we will adopt both the ordinance, as well as the policy resolution concerning its membership. I wanted to address one question that was raised the last time we discussed the ordinance. And Cheryl and I had proposed that we appoint members to the commission without taking party affiliation into account, so doing so in a nonpartisan manner. After conferring with the town attorney, we need to ensure that there aren't more than five members of any one party on the commission. So it's something that we're going to have to watch for and be aware of, but I don't see this being a, a limiting factor. And Cheryl, I appreciate you being part of the work group. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
I would just add along that subject, that we do anticipate that there will be unaffiliated electors on this committee, and we are going to have to adjust our resolution regarding minority representation accordingly, once we make a decision as to the, you know, the composition of the board. And I was really happy to see the unaffiliated voter process being worked on, because I think that is going to come into play right away when we, when we go to, you know, staff this group.
Great.
If I may add, to Cheryl's point, I gave a little bit of thought to this this afternoon. And if you did want to just clarify on the policy resolution, one thought I had is if you went to the second paragraph and added a sentence to the end of that paragraph that said something to the effect of, "No more than five of the seven members can be from the same political party," that may at least just sort of codify that in the resolution so it doesn't get forgotten at a future date.
All right, which paragraph are you?
On the policy resolution, the second paragraph. Perhaps adding a sentence to the end of that paragraph, just simply stating again that "No more than five of the seven members can be from the same political party," again, just sort of codifying that so it doesn't get lost in the future.
That's a good idea.
I, I think that, that's important. I think we should do that.
So is there any, any further discussion on the proposed ordinance or the policy resolution? Okay.
Question for you. Do we need to, in the policy, talk about how we're going to handle the unaffiliated voters? Or, I don't think, I don't think we do, but I'm just making sure I'm not just having a good conversation in my head and I'm wrong.
Mike, I thought the, I mean, the spirit of this is to not overstructure participation based on party. But the new information is we do have to meet requirements to at least have minority representation. So I think this wording does it. Wording specific to unaffiliates, to me, diminishes the flexibility that we're, we're looking for. Unless someone felt that there has to be a commitment that specifically is in here relative to unaffiliates, I personally don't think we need to have that.
I didn't think so, but I wanted to make sure, like I said, it wasn't just a good conversation in my head.
Yeah, I think I, I don't want to put words in Eric's mouth, but our intent was to make this open to everyone, based on the categories which we indicated in the resolution, making it more of a merit base, so to speak, appointment than a political appointment. That was, that was our intent anyway.
Yep.
We're hoping we got there.
Oh, and if I might add, and Eric and Cheryl, please correct me if I'm, if I'm misspeaking, but my understanding from our last work group meeting is that the plan would be, again, if the ordinance is adopted, if the policy resolution is adopted, that staff would help the work group get, sort of get the word out through news and announcements, perhaps our Twitter account, other means that we would help get the word out about these openings, and that the work group would interview potential, potential members. Correct?
That would be my expectation.
Yes. And then we will make recommendations to the entire board, reporting, you know, member appointment. That's how we saw it happening. Unless anybody has another idea of how we should do this.
Okay.
Yep.
And for anybody watching who's wondering, why are we doing an ordinance and a separate policy resolution? It's because ordinances are relatively hard to change, whereas policy resolutions can be amended by the board. And we don't know, you know, in, in a year from now, or probably not a year, but in the not-too-distant future, we might want a different composition of the board in terms of the background. So that's why we look to put that in a resolution instead of in the ordinance.
Well, and as some of our audience members brought up, we would like this to be a responsive and flexible, capable group that is able to handle, you know, the changing economic conditions that we anticipate seeing. So rather than being a more static group.
I think, can I just pick up on that point? Because if all we did was name this commission the way we did, I mean, the concern is, how is this different than the previous Economic Development Commission? And if all we did was name this group, it wouldn't be. But everything else that you're referring to, the integration with the town manager, increased strategic direction from the Board of Selectmen, the fact, and there's no reason that ad hoc committees cannot be created underneath this. Even some of the conversation with the charter revision is, you know, the, the Economic Development Task Force was both a kind of a overarching committee with appropriate ad hocking. So to your point, this in relation to everything else that's being integrated into it does make for a very different scenario than what we had previously.
Well, and there will be no appointments made by the town committees. So that in itself will allow the Board of Selectmen more flexibility to respond to different situations and circumstances.
And we will be required by the ordinance to give a committee direction.
Exactly.
Some very good changes.
Yeah. Okay. Any other feedback or comments? Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018 to adopt the proposed Economic Development Commission ordinance as presented, which shall be effective 21 days after publication in a newspaper having circulation within the town of Simsberry? Further move to authorize a summary of the adopted ordinance be published?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018 to adopt the Economic Development Commission Membership Policy Resolution with the, the line about minority representation that we discussed?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay. I wanted to thank Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby for providing staff support. And there were a lot of feedback that went into this, and I appreciate all of that. Just to summarize next steps in the process, we're going to be collecting applications over the next month or so with a plan of appointing new members to the new EDC at our October 10th meeting. And this board also has the important task of giving the EDC direction, as we discussed, at our, the plan right now is for our second meeting in September. I'm going to solicit feedback from this group as to what that direction should be. And then Cheryl and I will take that feedback, along with Maria and Melissa, and put a proposal in front of the board that would basically outline what the next 12 months would look like for the EDC. So again, October 10th will be the date. I would hope to review all of that.
Okay.
Item G, the Business Development Committee. It's a, a group that reviews requests for tax abatements, among other things, and, and makes recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. And given the change in our form of government, Maria is recommending changes to the process by which committee members are appointed, which I'm in agreement with. Would you mind summarizing the thought there?
Sure, absolutely. So this came on my radar very recently because we did receive an inquiry about potentially filing a tax abatement request. And looking back at the existing policy, it really better suited in terms of the composition of the committee under the old form of government. So most of the changes that are presented, I think, are reflective of the change in form of government. So it was a five-member committee. What I'm recommending to you all is that, rather than the chief executive, which is myself serving as a voting member, that I would be an ex officio member, so fully participating, helping to guide the conversation, coordinating staff resources, things of that nature, but that I would not be a voting member. And that essentially, the slot that was reserved for the CEO would then become now a Board of Selectmen slot, so that we would have a selectman participating in that committee. The remaining commission, or excuse me, committee slots would remain the same. So that's a Board of Finance slot, a zoning commission slot. There's a member-at-large slot for a member of the community, as well as a slot that's reserved for the Economic Development Commission. So once that commission is reconstituted, we would still need to point one person to this committee. An issue I saw with policies as it was currently structured is it essentially was open-ended to the appointments, there was no end date. What's happened is because the committee meets so infrequently, is that we don't have an active committee that's ready to go in the event that we do receive an application. So my thought being is that if every, you know, essentially two years, we're making appointments to this group, that we do have a group that is ready to go and is ready to proceed in the event that an application is received. So the person submitting the application isn't waiting for a long period of time for us to sort of get the organizational aspects of this group in order. Lastly, we also, at a staff level, and I want to thank the Planning Department team for this, Mike Liddon and Carrie Bybert, but want to thank them for working with Melissa and I and putting together an application for folks. The policy referenced that there was an application, but we did not actually have an application. And so we spent some time really going through the policy and making sure that the criteria that was supposed to be requested in the application wasn't so, in fact, incorporated into the application. So we have created an editable PDF form that people can use and then submit back to us. We'll make sure that's available online as well. And that is a summary of changes to the policy. And we spoke about this at the Economic Development Work Group recently, and Cheryl did volunteer to serve on that group. I did also speak with the Chairs of Zoning and Board of Finance, who were also willing to serve and help out with this group, and had a referral for Bill Ethier for the member-at-large slot. Who's a you?
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions?
Am I, in, in reading this, we're appointing someone from that Board Commission through the Board of Selectmen, correct? So in the effect, if someone, if that individual is no longer on the planning or zoning or EDC, the Board of Selectmen could then appoint somebody. So we're not crippling ourselves to keep them from having a quorum or focus on it. So I think that's a good idea.
That's correct. And that's a great point, Mike. So we did, and we talked a little bit about that at the Economic Development Work Group. And so we did add a clarifying sentence to the policy under the application requirements and procedures, a statement simply saying that should a BDC member who is an elected official or EDC member resign from their post, not be reelected or be reappointed prior to the BDC term expiring, they would not be able to continue to serve because they are in a BDC slot reserved for a designated Board or Commission. So just again, sort of codifying that that in fact would be the case.
I know this is kind of a late thought, but I did volunteer for this, but again, if any other Board of Selectmen member feels strongly about serving, I would certainly give way on that. I, I was also thinking we might consider an alternate. I think there are going to be times when somebody may not be available. And I don't, I don't know if we should have a provision for that, you know, like zoning has alternate, you know, other elected boards have an alternate ready to serve. I was just thinking there may be an occasion where one of us is either not available or perhaps has a conflict or something, you know? If a business comes before us and for whatever reason, one of us can't make a decision on that because of conflict, we might want to have an alternate Board of Selectmen member.
Are you thinking that the alternate would replace the other Board of Selectmen member or any member of the whole committee?
I was thinking they would just replace the Board of Selectmen member, but that's just for us.
Yeah.
I think that's a very good point.
Yeah, I don't see a downside in that. And I'd be, I'd be glad to raise my hand and be that alternate.
You know, I'm just throwing it out there. I know we didn't talk about it at, at the work group, but.
Yeah. Again, I know how tough, tough schedules can be. I don't see a downside to doing this.
Right. That's what I was thinking. And, you know, as, as I said, I'm, I'm happy to do it, but there may be somebody else who feels strongly about it, and I'm happy to yield on that also.
Okay. Do you see any, any issue with, with appointing an alternate tonight?
No. And certainly what we could do under the application requirements and procedures section, where we have bulleted one member of the Board of Selectmen, we could simply add one member of the Board of Selectmen and one alternate member of the Board of Selectmen. I think that would cover it.
Can I make another late, this is maybe more of a question here, but the terms, as it's outlined, would expire basically this time in two years from now? Does it make sense, or would it make sense to line this up with our terms? So basically, a new Board of Selectmen comes in and perhaps at their first meeting, an item of business would be to appoint this committee for two years?
I, I did raise that with Maria, but.
Yeah, whatever your preference. We can do either.
I think that would make sense because in theory, you could end up with somebody midterm or.
Right.
Carryover, so.
So what would be the, the expiration date if we?
December 3rd, 2nd of 2019. Let me.
You could do December 1st. You could always push it, the meeting a couple of days, or December 30th.
Yeah. So it's all December 2nd? Okay. I think that makes sense then.
Perfect.
Okay.
Changes.
Any other feedback? Okay. Is there a motion effective August 13th, 2018 to appoint the following people to the Business Development Committee? Robert Pomeroy for the Board of Finance slot, David Ryan for the zoning commission slot, Bill Ethier for the member-at-large slot, Cheryl Cook for the Board of Selectmen slot, myself, Eric Wellman, for the Board of Selectmen, I'm blanking on the term, alternate slot, all with terms expiring December 2nd of 2019.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Did we take the motion, I'm sorry, on the policy revision?
Oh.
Okay. Okay.
What?
The motion on the policy revision.
Let me get that.
We should do one for each.
So move effective August 13th, 2018 to revise the Business Development Center's policy as, we could say amended.
So do you want a separate motion or do you want to amend the motion?
Oh, a separate motion would be fine to that effect, just to take record of the revision to, to the policy.
Someone mind making that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good. I'm glad we got there.
That was good, guys.
Our last item is legal counsel for tax sales. So at our last meeting, we approved a tax sale policy for the town. In order to carry this policy out, we need legal counsel. And Maria laid out two options for moving forward. One would be hiring our general counsel, Updike Kelly and Spelacy. The other would be conducting an RFQ and seeing what, what options we get. In your packet, you'll see that the fee schedule for Updike Kelly is significantly lower than the other firm that had been discussed at some of our previous meetings. Maria, do you have any concerns with either approach?
I don't. If we do select the firm that we're currently using for our general counsel, I will say that it will help us be able to move forward more expeditiously in this manner, and it will save staff time and resources. I do have great confidence in Bob and his firm. I was glad to hear that they feel that they can provide this service to us. And we could simply, again, if you want to select Updike, Kelly, and Spelacy, we can certainly just do an addendum to our existing contract with them to include the scope of work. So again, from a staff resources perspective, that selection will certainly save time and energy. And again, I have every confidence that they could, they could do an excellent job for us.
Well, I could certainly get behind either approach. I think it makes sense to use Updike Kelly.
I do too.
I would support that, Eric.
Okay. Is there a motion effective August 13th of 2018 to use Updike Kelly and Spelacy, the town's general counsel, to conduct tax sales for the town of Simsberry and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute a contract addendum with the firm to reflect a scope of work and fees as presented in the correspondence dated August 3rd, 2018?
So move.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on now to appointments and resignations. So Kristin Formanak, Director of Community and Social Services for the town, is recommending the appointment of Brian List as a member of the Juvenile Review Board. Mr. List is the District Executive Director of the Farmington Valley YMCA. Is there a motion in effect of August 13th, 2018 to appoint Brian List as a member of the Juvenile Review Board?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item B. Is there a motion to accept with our thanks the resignation of Jill G., I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher that name.
We'll allow you.
No one's going to bail me out. Paul Otis as a regular member of the Conservation, as a regular member of the Conservation Commission, Inland Wetlands, Wetlands Agency, retroactive to June 4th, 2018.
So moved.
With our thanks.
With our thanks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item C, is there a motion to accept with our thanks the resignation of Michael Long as a regular member of the Tourism Committee, retroactive to July 26th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, is there a motion to appoint Kevin McCusker to the Conservation Commission with the term expiring January 1 of 2022?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item E, is there a motion to appoint Ann Erickson as a Member of Aging and Disability Commission with the term expiring January 1, 2019?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, is there a motion to reappoint Jan Losi to the Tourism Committee with an expiration date December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to accept with our thanks the resignation of Catherine Beal as a regular member of the Public Building Committee, retroactive to August 9th, 2018?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are putting her back to work.
Yep.
Yes. Short-lived.
And we've, I hope I, did we have that one in our agenda? Or is that?
No.
Okay.
Not yet.
All right, not yet. I'm not going to, okay. All right, not yet. I'm not going to, okay. And lastly, is there a motion to appoint Michael Egan as a member of the Public Building Committee with a term expiring January 1, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reviewing the minutes from our meeting about a month ago, is there any changes anyone would propose? Okay, then the minutes stand. Any Selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
I got a couple.
Sure.
Thank you for mentioning the picnic in the park coming up on August 25th. The Aging and Disability Commission provides this wonderful event, free of charge, to people with disabilities and their families. Also, Simsbury residents who reside in group homes are welcome to come. The Commission would also like to extend an invitation to all the Board of Selectmen members and the Town Manager, because it's really, it's a very nice event. It's at St. Catherine of Siena Church. And as I said, there's no charge. There is an ice cream truck, and a magician, and music, and it's a lovely event for families. And second, on the Community for Care, on September 12th, we'll be holding a program on mindfulness. There's been a lot of research lately on mindfulness and its efficacy in treating addiction, and also providing mental health services to younger people. So our, some of our high school counseling staff, in addition to some outside experts, will be coming and holding a panel discussion on that night regarding what mindfulness is, how it can be used, and what types of techniques are most effective. I would recommend it to parents, young adults, and students, if they're interested in that topic. I think it's an important one, and it gives people a positive technique to use, which I think is important for our students as they face a very difficult environment now.
Okay, good. Thank you. Cheryl, any other liaison or subcommittee reports? I have one from the Tourism Committee. I, they have been working on coming up with a vision, as well as some tactical activities, about what does it mean to promote tourism in Simsbury. And they've come up with a fairly long list of possible activities. And I asked them to categorize them for us, to make it more digestible, in terms of what can they do that's within their control versus what might they need more support from, for the town, either, either in terms of time or finances. And my expectation is that they're going to be coming to our next meeting in September, basically presenting those items, and then I'm hoping to have some discussion on the board to give them some direction about which items to flesh out more fully. So that's coming down the pipeline. Okay. Anything under communications that anybody wanted to raise? Nope. Okay. So, last item is our executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session with Maria Capriola, Melissa Appleby, Mike Glidden, Jeff Shea, Bob DiCrescenzo, Jesse Langer, and Jonathan Zeller to discuss the Deepwater Wind Appeal and Martin versus Town of Simsbury?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Mike, should we leave our power strips here, or should we take them with us?